Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education regular meeting at Waterbury Arts Magnet School. We'll begin this evening with a silent prayer. Thank you. Commissioner Sweeney, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone.
Commissioner Roth, Vice President Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez, Commissioner Pagano, Commissioner Serena O'Donoghue.
Here.
Commissioner Stango.
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone.
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
Present.
President Brown.
Present. Quorum is achieved. Next on the agenda is Communication. Commissioner Sweeney.
Motion to receive and place on file communications as listed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak this evening that didn't have an opportunity to sign up? Seeing none, continue. Superintendent's announcements.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to begin by officially acknowledging our new Chief Operating Officer, Mr. William Clark, who is joining us this evening and will officially begin his assignment on January 2nd, 2019. And I'd like to offer, if Mr. Clark would like to say a few words toward, please do so.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Good evening. Just had the opportunity to say a quick hello to everybody. It's really going to be my pleasure to be working with all of you. I've been in New Haven for the last decade of my career, and this really creates a nice opportunity for me to have my growth in my career and have a change and a new, exciting opportunity. I had the chance to meet with Dr. Ruffin and the mayor and members of the executive team during the interview process, and I must say, it really reminds me of when I went back to my position in New Haven, Chief Operating Officer, in 2008, which is when we were beginning the school reform initiative and some really exciting school construction and other opportunities, and felt like we've done some really good work there. And I think I bring a skill set that may, hopefully, will be successful here in many of those projects that are happening here. But I was really excited to meet with the team and the leadership and to spend some time with Dr. Ruffin and understand her vision and where she wants to lead, and it's just exciting. And one of the words we've used back and forth in our texts and emails and phone conversations over the last month or so has been exciting and excited. And I am excited to come work here and to work with all of you and to bring Waterbury and help bring Waterbury and this team to the next level. So, very excited to be here, looking forward to 2019 and many years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Another member of our team who is not here this evening but will be joining us in January, I believe, January 2nd, will be Dr. Tanya Byles. She will be joining us as the Supervisor of Pupil Services and will be getting moved in and finding a place and everything so that she could officially begin her work on January 2nd. Also, exciting news about our Deputy Superintendent. Extended the offer and has been accepted by Dr. Gregory Rodriguez, who will be joining us January 14th or around January 14th as our Deputy Superintendent. He's coming in from New Mexico and will serve in that capacity, and I look forward to introducing him to the board when he does officially arrive in January.
Great. All right. The team is growing. Good.
The team is growing, and with a couple of critical positions that we have yet to finalize, but we are constantly working on them, and whenever there is an update for the Board on both the Director of Human Resource and Talent Management and the Supervisor of Talent Management, I will be happy to share that with the Board, but both positions are still open. One is moving forward in terms of the process that we have to follow. We are not near interviewing anyone at this time, but the process is already started, and when it gets to my level, then I will be happy to give the Board an update on that. And the Director of Human Resource and Talent Management is still not ready to even receive applicants because that has been open, and we are seeking the absolute right person with the human capital concept to be able to come to our district and to be able to lead and restructure that department in some very important work that we have to lead ahead. Having said that, we have several other exciting news to share with everyone. We held a meeting with families and community members of the Wendell Cross School earlier this week to discuss plans for the renovation and expansion of the school. As we all know, that we want to expand Wendell Cross from a pre-K5 to a pre-K8, and we've received a $46 million grant for the renovation and expansion of that school, and had a community discussion with families during the week to discuss some options and have questions, and there were excellent questions that the families and the community had about what will happen and where the students may possibly have to attend school as the swing space while the school is being constructed, and of course, conversations about what that school may look like in terms of, do we renovate or do we have two classrooms for grade level, three classrooms for grade level? So, a lot of decision-making that we still have moving forward, but very happy that we are moving forward, and happy that we now have a COO who can also engage in that work with us. Kiara Springer, Jr., at Waterbury Arts Magnet School, has been accepted into 2019 All Eastern Honors Ensemble Honors Treble Choir. It is a highly competitive and difficult selection process, and Kiara will be among several hundred high school students chosen from high schools in New England, New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. The 2019 NAFME-sponsored festival will take place at the David L. Lawrence Convention Center in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. The Margaret M. Generali Foundation has awarded six grants to Waterbury educators totaling $8,700 for the 2018-19 academic year. The recipients of these grants and the grant titles are Michael Panoni from Willby High School with Podcasting with Panoni, Matthew Winner from Enlightenment School with the Enlightenment School Newspaper Project, Emma Summa from Gil Martin School with Do It For Dylan, the Wingman Program, Kristen Albert from North End Middle School with Supporting Content Area Learning with Graphic Novels, Elena Seibert-Personaire from Kennedy High School with The Right Stuff, High School Journalism Offers Pathways to College and Careers, and Kristen Petty from Willby High School with Story Selection for the Soul. We're very excited about the Foundation's award to the teachers. We understand that the Foundation conducts these opportunities, and we're very pleased. The Foundation was established in memory of Maggie Generali, a city principal who died suddenly in 1999. The Foundation has awarded over $188,000 to educators in Waterbury to bring innovative programs into their classrooms. This year's recipients will be honored with the Foundation's Second Annual Libations for Literacy event in the early spring. More information on the ceremony and Foundation will be found on the Margaret M. Generali Foundation Facebook page. Waterbury Public Schools raised a total of $10,205 for the St. Mary's Foundation for its breast cancer screening fund. The amount was collected from staff and students. There will be some new parking regulations in place around Driggs Elementary School when students return to school after the new year. Irving Street will become one-way southbound towards Woodland Terrace and Buckingham Street with parking allowed on both sides. There will be no parking on the east side of Pine Street between Buckingham Street and Woodland Terrace during school days, except for parents or guardians dropping off or picking up students. Pre-kindergarten applications for three-year-olds will be accepted from January 2nd through February 28th. Applications for four-year-olds will be accepted from March 1st through May 31st. Placement will not be considered until all required documents are received, including birth certificate, proof of address, income verification, updated health and immunization record, and flu shot. Anthony Aurelano is currently a senior at Crosby High School and has been a member of the Bulldog Soccer Team for four years. Anthony is arguably the best soccer player to ever don a Crosby uniform, and his astounding career on the pitch has not gone unnoticed, as evidenced by his numerous awards and accolades. Anthony has led the soccer team at Crosby to two NVL and the state tournament drafts during his playing days. Anthony's fierce competitiveness, speed, skill, and tenacity on the soccer field has been unparalleled in annuals of or Crosby High School soccer history. Anthony's extraordinary achievements are unmatched by any other Waterbury Public School athlete/soccer player that has ever played the game at the high school level. The Education Department held a door decorating contest in the Chase Building this week. This year, we announced winners in two separate categories: individual doors and decorated suites. The winner for the best individual door was Ann Phelan. The winner for the decorated suite was Human Resource Information Services. An honorable mention went to Special Education and Physical Education Departments. The doors were spectacular, and photos are available on both the district website as well as Channel 16. I want to tell you, when you walk around the central office building or Chase Building, it is just a sight to see. The spirit of the holidays and the creativity of staff is just amazing, and I was very pleased as well. I was so pleased that our students serenaded us with Christmas carols and wonderful performances during our holiday celebration. We have talent, not only from our staff, but we have extraordinary talents from our students, and we got to hear all of that. What a wonderful place to be. Schools will be closed for winter session from December 24th through January 1st, and I wish everyone a very happy holiday and season greetings, and we will return to a fabulous new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions for Superintendent?
Uh, just.
Vice President.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to, going back to the Driggs new parking regulations, I recall that the PTO advocated for this, and I just wanted to congratulate them for finally being able to have these regulations in place. So, you know, the PTO at Driggs just keep going, doing fantastic job. So, just wanted to say.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, President's comments. I just want to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season and a safe holiday, and just enjoy. And I want to thank everybody for their hard work for this half of the school year. I can't believe it's December already, and we're going into 2019, but no, everyone is appreciated, and wonderful things are happening in our district thanks to everyone. So, thank you all very much. Okay.
Motion to suspend the regular order of business to convene an executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Okay, we'll go into the back room.
How you doing, kiddo? Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
No, that's fine. I'll remind you guys. Nothing big.
All right. Good to see you, too.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Send. Merry Christmas. I did. Thanks. And I was at the Governance Council when you were on the phone about the fingerprints.
Could I have a motion to return to the regular order of business, please?
Motion to return to the regular order of business. No votes were taken.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Stango, 9.1.
Item 9.1, regarding the Buckhill Annex Pre-K Principal Appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the appointment of Amy Sims as the principal of Buckhill Annex Pre-K effective immediately. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Superintendent Ruffin.
Yes, Commissioners. It is my recommendation that Amy Sims be appointed the principal of the annex. We went through the appropriate interview processes and find that she is very well-qualified and suited for the position. She carries with her an extensive background in special education and general education and has done an outstanding job serving as interim principal, and without question, she is the best person for the job, and I strongly recommend that she is selected as the principal to begin serving immediately in that capacity.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Welcome, Amy. Continue to do a great job. Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent calendar? Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I would like to remove item 10.2 and 10.4, please.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey.
Thank you. Item 10.5, please.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The remaining consent calendar. 10.1, request approval of a professional service agreement with Pediatric Services of America, Avena Healthcare to provide nursing services for students with disabilities. 10.3, Committee on Finance, request approval of an agreement with Cooperative Educational Services to provide education services for students with disabilities. 10.6, Committee on Policy and Legislation, revisions to the high school grading policy. 10.7, Committee on Policy and Legislation, revisions to the elementary grading policy. 10.8, revisions to the middle school grading policy. 10.9, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. 10.10, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the consent calendar is read.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you. Items removed from the consent calendar, 10.2. Commissioner Jason Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee of Finance recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education approves Amendment Number Two to the Agreement with Charles F. Hayden School at Boys and Girls Village Incorporated to provide services to children with disabilities. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. I remove this and one other item for my concerns that I brought up actually at workshop. We have a increase of $300,000 to this contract. The period of performance has not changed. We had a contract for a not-to-exceed amount, but now we're looking to add an amendment to add money to that. My interpretation of that, and my opinion, is that this is something that should be a renegotiation. If we're going to open contracts, which has been something I've asked in the past, we should also renegotiate the dollar amount. I don't have any questions to the services being rendered by this supplier. I really do not. This is a special population, which I've always worked hard for them. However, when it comes to finances, if we're going to open a contract to give a supplier services more money, even though they're already under contract with the dollar value, I think that should be honored. So, it's not as though I don't want to approve this, it's though I want to also negotiate the price and not just accept their additional value and say, yes, we're going to write the check. So, those are my opinions, my opinions. I don't know how the rest of the Board feels, but those are my opinions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Stone, did you make a motion to approve at the end of your?
Yes.
You did, okay. Was there a second? Okay, all right. So, now we're in discussion. Okay, thank you. Any other points of, Vice President, did you want to say something?
Well, yes. My question would be in regards to Commissioner Van Stone's concerns. Are you recommending that we send this back to committee, or what is your recommendation?
I don't have a recommendation till we put it to vote, at which time, when we put it to vote, I will have something else to say. I cannot make anything until we put it to vote.
Okay.
We're in the discussion phase, so?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam President, before we take a vote, I would like to make a motion that we table this item to another meeting where we can get some more information, and that's a motion I would like to put before this Board.
Okay.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
No. There's already a motion on the floor.
There's already, yeah. That's what I was going to say. There's already a motion on the floor to approve it. So, that's before us right now, so we can't.
Well, I would like a clarification, then. If this vote goes forward, how would then I make a motion to table this?
No. Madam Chair, if I may, you can make a motion to amend the current motion that's on the floor.
I'm not looking to make a motion to amend. I'm making a motion, or I would like to make a motion to table.
Well, that would be the amendment. That would be the amendment to the motion, to table it.
Well, then, I would like to make, if you're telling me that's the protocol, I would like to make an amendment that this vote or this item is tabled.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment to table 10.2?
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call.
Discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Right. Vice President Harvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Serena O'Donoghue.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Stango.
No.
Commissioner Sweeney.
No.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone.
Yes.
President Brown.
No. Okay.
What is the vote, please?
Four, three motion passes.
Motion passes to table 10.2.
No, motion passes to amend it.
I mean, to amend it.
We now have to take a vote on the amended motion.
Okay? So, the question before us is to remove this, actually, to remove this from the...
No.
No, that's not.
To table.
The motion was to amend the motion to accept this, to table it.
The motion that's currently, should be on the floor, is to amend the motion to table, I'm sorry, to table the motion.
Right.
Does Commissioner Van Stone have a date to which you would like it tabled? Well, I think we need further input from mainly city purchasing, who is responsible for these items, to give us the ability to renegotiate. So, I do not have a date that I would like to bring this back.
Okay. I'd like Supervisor of Special Education to just clarify this discussion. Are there implications to tabling this tonight?
There could be implications. The reason for the increase was not a matter of tuition. The reason for the increase was not a matter of tuition, it was a matter of an increase in students that are receiving services, specialized services at these facilities, both Genghis Center and Children's Center of Hamden, Boys and Girls Village. If we table it to a later date, we will not be able to, we will not pay the bills for these, for the children that are currently in these programs. And depending on how long it goes, we may or may not have to transfer them to other facilities.
Okay. So, the implications for the amended motion to table this to a later date has implications to impact children's services?
Correct.
If I may, Madam President?
Commissioner Van Stone?
My comment to that is, we should not be obligated to cast a vote based on something coming before us, not in a timely manner.
Thank you for your opinion. Madam Chair. Any other discussion? Commissioner Sweeney?
I think we all know about the issue of special education, and we don't know at any point in time when children come into the district who already have IAPs that we now have to service. And this is not, unfortunately, is not unusual for most districts to have a child move in mid-year when we have already settled contracts with providers and need services. And I think that it's been quite well explained?
Point of order.
By Melissa in the past. It's not a point of order. I have a right to a comment.
No, there's a point of order because I've actually gone against Robert rules, which if we're voting on a motion to table, there's actually no debate. So, I'm actually in violation as well.
May I continue, Commissioner Sweeney, and then we'll deal with it.
I just feel that Mrs. Baldwin, both at the committee level and at workshop, and here again tonight, has explained the suddenness, sudden urgency of servicing these students.
Thank you.
Again, point of order.
Commissioner? Go ahead.
Again, if it's a vote on a table, there is no debate. And again, I will say, I am also guilty, but actually, to now correct ourselves, there should be no debate. We should take a vote.
Right. We did take the vote. The vote?
No, we did not take a vote on the motion to table. And motion to table does not allow for debate, per Robert's rules.
Right. So, the motion on the floor right now is to table.
Correct. Roll call vote.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Serena O'Dornal?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
Commissioner Stango?
No.
Commissioner Sweeney?
No.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Yes.
President Brown?
No.
Three, four motion to table fails.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is 10.4. I'm sorry, 10.?
So, now we've had no action whatsoever on 10.2.
So, now we have to reconsider this 10.2. Could I have a motion to approve Amendment Number Two to the Agreement with Charles F. Hayden School at Boys and Girls Village, Inc., to provide education services for students with disabilities? Could I have a motion, please?
I would submit that I believe that the motion was amended, and as it was voted on, as amended. So, that motion no longer exists.
Yeah, this piece of paper no longer exists. We amended it, then we made a motion to table it, which failed.
So, at this point, we would need a motion to add.
Okay. Is there a motion to add the agenda item 10.2 to the? Okay. All right.
Madam President?
This is complicated tonight.
Madam President?
Could I have a motion to?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda an item concerning Amendment Number Two to the Agreement of the Charles Hayden School of Boys and Girls Village.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Commissioner Van Stone?
Okay. I'm not going to prolong this, but basically, what we're saying is that anyone who sends us a dollar value, we are just going to say yes, just because there's a gun to our head. And once again, I've said, every time there's a gun to our head.
Excuse me, point of order, you can talk after. This is a motion to add this back to the agenda.
You asked for comments.
But, just to add it back to the agenda.
Fine.
With the amendment? Is that right?
No, there's no amendment at this point.
No.
Okay. Roll call vote. To add it back to the agenda.
Vice President Harvey?
To add to the agenda. Go ahead.
To add to the, yes.
Commissioner Serena O'Dornal?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
No.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
No.
President Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries to have this motion on the agenda. Now, could I have a motion to approve this new motion? To amend?
No.
No, no, no. Approval of the amendment to the agreement with Charles F. Hayden School.
Jason.
Trying to figure out what number it becomes.
You don't need a number. Yep, just read the motion.
Deja vu. Ladies and gentlemen, Committee on Finance recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve Amendment Number Two to the Agreement with the Charles F. Hayden School at Boys and Girls Village, Inc., to provide services to children with disabilities. Respectfully submitted again and so moved.
Second. Discussion. Commissioner Van Stone?
Now, I'll do deja vu. Once again, we will agree, as a board, regardless of individual votes, that when the gun is to our head, we will pull the trigger. It's getting tiring for me to bring these items to this board, and we just disregard that we're being taken advantage of. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner O'Dornal?
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner Van Stone, I actually, I do agree with you that I think we should have had more time to maybe further have this discussion, or really to try to either negotiate or review the contract. But with that said, I also don't want to take away services, you know, for children with disabilities, and I know we both have that passionate. So, with that said, when, you know, Melissa Baldwin talked about it, that's why I changed my vote to not to table it, because I don't want to take away from the kids that need it the most. But I do agree that I think we should have had more time to be able to discuss this vote, but at the same time, I don't want to hinder the services for our students, so thank you. I just wanted to state that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll, do you want a roll call? Okay, roll call.
Vice President Harvey?
No.
Commissioner Serena O'Dornal?
It was the vote for?
For, to approve.
To approve, yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
No.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
No.
President Brown?
Yes.
Three, motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay, 10.? Where are we now?
Four.
10.4.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Finance recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education approve Amendment Number Two to the Agreement with the Genghis Center at the University of St. Joseph to provide educational services for children with disabilities. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion. I would ask Melissa to describe this amendment and how the contracts are put out.
There was an increase in number of students that have been placed at the Genghis Center at the University of St. Joseph's. The reason for the increase is the number of children that are at the college, not an increase in the tuition for the current school year. For example, if I went to St. Joseph's in August and I was charged $200 a day, and I went in December and was charged $200 a day, the tuition was not increased. The increase is due to the number of students that are in the schools.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam President?
Okay, we're in discussion. Go ahead. Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Through you. I would respectfully disagree that actually part of the amendment is a new rate scale for the 2018-2019 contract period. And once again, we had a not-to-exceed agreement that we are reopening, and we are introducing, at least per the paperwork given to us, that the 2018-2019 fees went up. If we are sending more students, that's fine. I understand that. However, typically, when you offer a service additional numbers, the price either stays the same or goes down. So, once again, I completely disagree that we should just accept this as written, and we should, once again, and I disagree that an amendment is appropriate, that we actually did renegotiate without calling it such. So, once again, I think this board needs to reconsider however and whoever the population is, we need to be financially conscious when we make these agreements. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sweeney?
Madam Chair, if I may, I have a question for Mrs. Baldwin.
Sure.
Mrs. Baldwin, when did we negotiate the contract for the 18-19-year fees?
Every contract that we create, I'm not talking about amendments, is a three-year term. It was given to the Special Education Department that that's how the Audit Department would like that to be done. We receive the rates for each school that we place students in by July 1 of that year. So, we have rates in place by July 1 so that we can create a purchase order in order to pay for our tuition for our students. Respectfully, we don't always have control over what DCF and other state agencies do and where they place students. So, at some, at some times, especially with Char, I know we're not on Charles P. Hayden, but in that particular case, there are children that live there, and that's where DCF has placed them.
So, when we're talking about the 18-19 rates, those were set back in January?
Right.
And what we're looking at now is adding students at that same rate that was set in July, I'm sorry, in July?
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
Any other clarifications? Commissioner Van Stone?
I would like to clarify, but the July rates were not?
Negotiated.
Negotiated, nor were they included the last time we voted on this contract. They have happened since, so they are new to what we're voting on tonight.
Thank you. Any other points of clarification?
Madam President, may I make a motion? If I'm doing it the right time this time? I would like to make a motion to table item 10.4 to a future date.
I think the procedure right now is to amend the motion that's on the floor.
Fine. I will amend the motion that's on the floor, and I will recommend that we table this item 10.4 to a later date.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there is a second. Madam Clerk, take your roll call, please. This is to amend?
Amend.
Amend the motion to table it. Go ahead.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Serena O'Dornal?
No.
Yes. Make a mo, wait, make a motion?
This is a motion to table this item.
No, it's a motion to amend it.
To amend the motion to table it.
Okay, no.
No.
Commissioner Stango?
No.
Commissioner Sweeney?
No.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Yes.
President Brown?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. Back to the original motion? Madam Clerk, take the roll.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Serena O'Dornal?
The amendment is to keep it?
No, we haven't amended it. It's the original motion.
The original motion, we're voting on, yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
No.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
No.
President Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is 10.5, Committee on Policy and Legislation. Commissioner Sweeney?
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revised lead screening of preschool and kindergarten children policy, number 5141.1, as attached.
Second.
Vice President Harvey?
Thank you. I wanted to pull this out because I had been going back and forth in regards to how I was going to vote for this, but I received confirmation pretty much on how I was going to vote a couple of places. One is at the legislative dinner where State Representative Jerry Reyes and Larry Butler spoke about the Black and Hispanic Caucus and their concerns with lead poisoning and asthma. I then had the opportunity to attend NAACP forum this past Saturday, and there were discussions about the priorities that they would be addressing with the new administration, and one of them was regarding health and particularly, specifically, lead poisoning and asthma, particularly as it relates to our students and our kids of color. Lead poisoning, some of the effects are developmental delays, learning and cognitive difficulties, behavioral problems, abdominal pain, loss of appetite, sluggishness, fatigue, and we're talking about to our babies, our kids in early childhood, et cetera. Now, let me just say that I appreciate all the work that has been done around lead poisoning. I know we've had, you know, our initiatives in Waterbury with Safe Home, and we have done different things to help promote and to help alleviate lead poisoning, particularly in our children, but I think that more needs to be done. And so, I will be voting against this. Before I even go further, I want to thank the Health Department for all they've done, the nurses, et cetera, but it is my understanding that the state regulation, the current state regulation is going to be challenged so very, very soon. So, I will be voting no to the recommendations. I think we need to stay focused on alleviating this issue because it is so devastating to our children who have lead poisoning. So, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Dornal?
Thank you, Madam President. I will say, just for clarifications, that the schools and the Health Department, they are going to continue lead screening for preschool, but the situation is if the preschooler repeats preschool for another year. And I think the other issue was the chronic absenteeism, if they didn't have it done the following preschool year. So, there are certain years that are state mandates, and I think that was an issue where there was a lot of chronic absenteeism if those kids didn't have particular screenings as, such as other vaccinations as they progress. You know, I do agree that they do need the lead screening, which they will initially, but it's also, I think, the parent's responsibility to be accountable to really, you know, seek forward in making sure that they continue that. But, you know, the Health Department is going, is going to continue to do the lead screening, but I think the mandates is not where it's every preschool year, you know, they're doing it preschool, kindergarten, you know, and so forth. So, I understand their concerns, but as a parent myself, like, I would, you know, maintain that, so.
Commissioner Sweeney? Just for further background, the state statute, as has been discussed, only requires that one testing when the child enters preschool. The onus falls on the physicians to make sure that they're, they do the lead. The onus falls on the physicians to make sure that they do the lead screening, that they follow up on any elevated levels, but it also, the statute also allows for school staff who identify children who exhibit learning difficulties that may be representative of lead poisoning to make a referral. So we have things in place to watch out for it, but the big issue is to make sure that that child gets that first screening very early on, and it is that first screening that will indicate to that child's physician whether they need to be screened further and more often. But we're denying children entrance to pre-K services, to preschool, based on they haven't gone and gotten a second or a third test. And again, if the child comes in at pre-K 3, then they give their lead testing at their pre-K 3, and then when they go move into pre-K 4, they need to be tested again, and as Commissioner O'Dorno said, if they're held back and they stay at pre-K 3 or pre-K 4 level, then it's a third test. And parents and physicians are all saying that it's excessive. It's difficult for parents, it's an expense for parents to have that screening done again. And again, the state doesn't require it, only Waterbury does. So we're cognizant of the issues in a city that has such elderly housing stock, but again, the Health Department is on it, physicians in the city are very aware of it and watch their young charges very well and very closely for indications of lead, and I think that our staff do very well in identifying those issues they believe may be related to lead poisoning. So I'm comfortable with going with the state statute and the one testing as they enter pre-K.
Thank you. Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. At the committee meeting, I had a lot of the same concerns Vice President Harvey had, and while I'm generally one to always say, well, let's get whatever the state benchmark is, let's get there, but I thought Commissioner Harvey made a pretty good point that it's okay if we lead sometimes. So I had asked in the meeting to see if our Health Department could bring us any data that these second or third tests showed something, that maybe in that first year, there wasn't a lead poison, by the time they were here two or three years from now, we saw something so we could get ahead of that. I have not seen any of that data between now and then. So until I see that, I think I'm going to side on the, you know, concern of the parents and the physicians saying that right now it's an undue burden. If the Health Department or our school nurses get us information in the meantime, I would have no problem revisiting this to talk about it some more, but without that data in front of me, I think at this point, the initial test is a common sense approach, and holding kids out of class and missing days at those early ages is an unfair burden upon them as well. So as we stand now, I'll be voting for this tonight.
Commissioner O'Dorno.
Would it be possible that, I mean, I can try to get that information, you know, for the board if you'd prefer, from either the Health Department or even from just the Health and Wellness Committee, just so we can have a better clarification if you'd like.
Yeah, I thought it would just be helpful that if, you know, when, we created this policy for a reason, that we have a lot of lead paint in this district. So if we happen to have stumbled upon a solution that no other town in this Connecticut had, we should be the model and not bend to their will. So if that data exists and it's brought forward and it shows that, you know, it is good that we've been testing multiple times because of X, Y, and Z, then I think that would give Waterbury the edge here, and I think it would make it easier for Jerry and Larry and the rest of our delegation to go up there and fight for that change. But short of seeing that data, I think right now it's more important to get the kids in school.
Thank you. I actually am thrilled that the legislature and community advocates are going to make this a priority. It's been a priority of mine through my legislative career. We fought very hard on the state level in the late '90s to even require testing. Testing was not even required in 1999. So now, in the first leg of the legislation, only required if the children were on Husky. But then subsequently, we fought to have all children regardless of their payment. So I'm thrilled that we're fighting the fight because it is a preventable disease. But what's before us is a matter of keeping kids out of school who don't have the second screening. They all have to have a screening by 24 months, and that's the most perilous time when the toddlers are going around, they're touching their hand to mouth, the oral, and it's the lead dust that really is the most severe. But that said, because of the older housing, it impacts our urban children more. So I'm thrilled that people are going to advocate, and I know Representative Butler at our legislative dinner, we did put that on the agenda. I raised that issue, I'm very committed to it, and there are dollars from the state due to his lobbying to try to get to the housing. It's the housing situation that really is, needs to be addressed, the older housing stock. So I look forward to working with everybody to continue this fight, and I absolutely agree that it's just immoral to have children being lead poisoned, and so I absolutely agree. So thank you for keeping the fight, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So the bill before us, I mean, the motion before us, the bill before us, I'm back in the legislature. Oh, okay. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote.
Vice President Harvey.
No.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno.
No. No.
Commissioner Stango.
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney.
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
Yes.
President Brown.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Now we will go on to number 12, Committee on Policy and Legislation. Commissioner Sweeney.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revised... Oh, I've got the wrong one, I apologize. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revised physical restraint seclusion policy 5144.1 as attached with the new title of physical restraint seclusion exclusionary timeout policy.
Second.
Discussion. See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Number 13, Superintendent's Notification to the Board.
Motion to receive and place on file, Superintendent's Notification to the Board, 13.1 through 13.7.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Number 14, unfinished business of the preceding meeting only. 15, other unfinished, new and miscellaneous business. Vice President Harvey.
Thank you. Quickly, I want to just thank Granville Academy for the invitation to their Christmas party, which was held this past Tuesday, and a treat, not only the treat to eat, treat, but also a treat was that we had visiting college students from Waterbury, some are attending HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities, colleges in the area post-university and Nogatuck Valley, and they were all weighing in on their first year or their first semester at college. And it was very helpful, the students asked various questions, which was very interesting, and they spoke about life on campus and gave some advice, so I really think that was a very, very good approach to, you know, to get, you know, college students, you know, fresh, you know, freshly there, you know, as freshmen, coming back and giving advice. So I really, really appreciated that, and I enjoyed myself, and I enjoyed myself at the Christmas party, eating all the sweets, so I just wanted to thank Granville Academy. I believe they did extend the invitation to our Assistant Deputy Superintendent as well, I don't know if she could make it or not, but they will keep doing that, but just want to thank Granville Academy for that and just continue the good work. Thank you.
Commissioner Sweeney.
Dr. Ruffin, I just want to make sure we just, on the consent calendar, did approve a change to make up work that students bring back to school after they have been out for an extended absence, and we originally sought just to equalize the language between the elementary, middle, and high schools. However, within that discussion, Dr. Ruffin identified that we have 10 days for the return of work, and we have revised that to five. We felt that 10 days was a little excessive, and that 10 days, five days made more sense. So five school days after the child returns to school, all make up work for the absence should be in. I just want to make sure, we talked about it, about making sure that we get the word out to the parents through the IRIS system, through our website, through the parent liaisons, school newsletters, because that is a change, it's a mid-year change, want to make sure that all the parents are aware and all the high school students are aware that we have gone from 10 days to five days.
Okay. I would just like to put a plug for the Fourth Annual Martin Luther King Youth Event, Youth Explosion, that will be held January 19th at Waterbury Career Academy. It's always an exciting event. The Waterbury Public Schools partners with the Waterbury Concerned Black Council...
Black Clergy.
Black Clergy Council. And I know many of us, Commissioner Harvey and Mary Ann Merrill and Pat Moran and Dr. Ruffin, were part of the planning committee, and it's going to be very exciting, so we encourage families and parents and youth to attend and really honor Martin Luther King and his legacy. So looking forward to January 19th. Any other comments? Okay, could I, there's no executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.